Time I'd like to call the Anderson County Council meeting, April 19th, to order. I'll ask Ms. Wilson to list the indication pledge leaders. I'd like us all to rise and if we would have a moment of silence for Tim York's family. He passed away his past week. He was building his better for Anderson County for many years. Let's keep him, his family and our thoughts and prayers, please. Amen. Ms. Wilson?
May we pray. Gracious heavenly Father, God of our fathers, we thank you for the privilege of living in a free country. We ask your divine wisdom and guidance on our proceedings here tonight, and we ask your divine wisdom and protection in those who serve to protect us and to keep us free. In the name of my precious Lord Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Praise the flag, amen, and say to the American, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, are there any changes, corrections to be made to the April 5th minutes?
Yes, sir. May I?
Ms. Wilson?
Page thirty-six, line sixteen, the words should be ledger rather than ledge. I'm not saying anything that I own. Thank you.
No. Mr. Crowder makes motion to accept the minutes. Is that change? Thank you, Mr. Allen. All in favor of motion, show hands. All opposed, light signs. The motion carries now. Moving on to item four, citizens' comments. Please, Mr. Harmon calls your name, step up, state your name and district. Keep items on the, this first go around, on gen items only. You have three minutes. Please address the chair. Harmon?
Mr. Chairman, first citizen signed up is Elizabeth Fan.
Elizabeth Fan, District Three. There are many things on here to talk about tonight, but I'm going to just talk briefly about number eight. I'm hoping that Mr. Tom Allen can really give us some insight into the audit, which I have a copy of and haven't read. But, we have problems with the people who are working on our roads. Just this week, I was coming up from Clemson Boulevard to turn onto Whitehall at the Walgreen CVS. Finally got through the light and then got stuck with my rear end out in the road. They were spraying asphalt on cracks. Nobody had any sign out ahead of time. When I got up, there was one truck behind the people who were actually spraying, and it was this guy. And he was sitting with a stop sign in one hand and a cellphone in the other. And he wasn't talking on the cellphone, but he was looking at it like he was either doing texting or Facebook. So, he was supposed to be directing traffic around, but because he was playing with his phone, he didn't. So, the traffic was backing up, backing up, backing up, all along the road. I don't know whose truck it was that was actually doing the work. I couldn't get up that close to see the emblem because I took a detour down the first street I could so I wouldn't be behind all that. Not too long ago, in the city, I was coming up, I think it's Malden Road, to come up to the Wells Fargo downtown. Came up that road and there were six city trucks, nine people, one person out with a pressure washer, and everybody else standing around. Now, folks, that's where the money's going. If we ran the county, the state, the federal like a business, you wouldn't have all this waste and people wouldn't be so hurting for taxes because the money would actually go to something that's worthwhile.
Harmon?
Mr. Chairman, next citizen signed up is Maurice Martin.
Actually, I want to talk about other matters in seventeen. That was on agenda.
That was on agenda?
Yeah, that was seventeen, so.
Okay, you can pick up. They'll get you, they'll get you the next, the next, next go around. Make sure you call his name, Matt, on that. Mr. Harmon? Next.
Next, Elizabeth Dever.
Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Dever from District One, and I have property in District Five, and I wanted to speak briefly to the land use ordinance, the number nine on the meeting tonight. My family had brought some concerns to the Planning Public Works Committee almost two years ago regarding the impact of Chapter Six, Article Three, the airport height and land use ordinance on our property. My understanding is the county has been diligently working out the details of the ordinance since that time, and it per se has not come before council that I'm aware of. The, the current ordinance that you're looking at tonight in number nine does have a section five twenty-three, airport protective zones, that are to coordinate with Chapter Seventy, as I understand it. While the areas of section twenty-three, section five twenty-three are not highlighted as having been changed, to my untrained eye, it does appear that there's still probable restrictions that are going to be placed on my property. Over the past two years, we have been in contact with some county officials, but I don't have clarity at this point on that contact, and I would be more, much more, I mean, on the impact, I would be much more comfortable understanding the impact on this particular plot of land before it re-zoned as what was in the prior land use in the Chapter Seventy was pretty restrictive overall on land that has no restrictions on it at this point in time. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon. Moving on to item five, it's Gusford Garden, Anderson County Alternative School, Ms. Floyd.
I received a telephone call from the director of the alternative school who asked for more time. He, um, his, he called me today to tell me that he will be getting back in touch with our secretary to come up with another time for him to come talk to us about the alternative school. Thank you.
Item number six, presentation of the Golden Year Jamboree, Ms. Barnwell?
Good evening, and on behalf of our Joe Brown Senior Center, home of your Anderson County Senior Citizens Program, we are launching something from our past that's coming out again into our present. And to set the tone of that past, I wanted you to see how we have made news in the past. Joe Brown had an unique gift. She understood law, demonstrated to voters in the senior population of Anderson County. She demonstrated that every day by her dedicated and kind of self on her own. In the late nineteen seventies, the central program of education for senior citizens was started, the dream of Phil Billings, director of adult education for the school District Five. In nineteen eighty-one, a grant from the governor, Richard Bradley Wallace, started a collaborative effort to bring together the school District Five, the city of Anderson, and Anderson County to create a county-wide senior citizen program. Strong supporters of Congressman Bob O'Hara and Representative Pat Garrett. In the years that followed, Anderson County's efforts to enhance the quality of life for its senior population became a model for the state of South Carolina. The program's including shuffleboard, dancing, pushing tournament, open duty exercises, health rates, art and crafts, cooking, consumer education, safety programs, and fifty-five things designed to keep seniors busy. Using her musical talent, Joe helped organize the Anderson County Senior Citizens Program. One venue was the annual senior citizen jamboree. In nineteen eighty-six, the program was modeled after the popular theme on the show. Chaplain Fred Breen in a local newspaper praised the county effort, which she notes as made a valuable educational, cultural, and recreational contribution to its senior population, thereby making the community a more meaningful environment. David Watson, the county administrator, was one who worked closely with Joe Brown.
And everybody supported that government, the county's senior citizens, and all of the other, the community's political party, the people, and everyone knows, and so, well, good brother. And Joe did such a fantastic job. We live in Alabama, and I know where it was so close to her, and people loved her for it, and she was there.
Joe was recognized in nineteen ninety-three with the Community Service Leadership Award by the Anderson Independent. Three months before her death in nineteen ninety-six, Lieutenant Governor Bob Keeler presented Joe with the Order of the Palmetto for Her Contributions to Anderson County and its Senior Population.
We gather here today with some of the people whose lives have been touched, whose lives will never be the same because of Joe Brown. So, Joe, you're not only deserving of our state's highest honor, you exemplify what this honor represents.
Joe responded saying, "We're never too old when there's something to live for." People start getting old when they start feeling like they can't do anything anymore. With this new senior citizen facility, once again, Anderson County is showing its commitment to its senior population by making sure they have plenty to do. As a law, Joe has won all of us to make a difference. And so, the legacy continues. And as mom and her seniors, and you saw all the beautiful faces then of the Silver Tsunami, the Silver Tsunami has only grown over these years, and Anderson County has been preparing for that growth, an onslaught of our aging population, but not just a retired aging population, a very healthy, eager to make a difference and give back Silver Tsunami generation. So, our Anderson County Senior Citizens Program since two thousand and seven has celebrated an annual open house in the Joe Brown Center. That open house has featured the annual Joe Brown Senior of the Year recipient, and as I said, we love making news. And if you haven't seen your local Anderson magazine, the last two publications scream your Anderson County Senior Citizens Program as soon as you open up the covers. But we honor our annual Senior of the Year. We started a sunflower dessert contest, and just real quick, you may not know that the logo that Brandon Grace, the director before me selected, he never once asked what my mom's favorite flower was. He didn't have to. He selected mom's favorite flower. Therefore, the sunflower that represents Anderson County Senior Citizens Program represents all of these blossoming seniors all across our county being active, being engaged, being involved, making a difference. So, the senior, the sunflower dessert contest started with our bakers in their kitchens being creative and then being celebrated for their creations that they brought to our first events. Our Anderson Independent Mail has always done a fabulous job of capturing those beautiful creations that our seniors baked in their kitchens. We have basically outgrown our own open house, but as mom's daughter, my personal dream has always been to reestablish for our community the Golden Years Jamboree. What she and her seniors and the senior industry during the eighties and into the nineties accomplished at the Coleman Rec Center, the dream is there to accomplish it once again in our civic center. So, you have an outline, I hope in your pocket, right, Kim, that showcases what our inaugural relaunched Golden Years Jamboree will look like on July twentieth. It begins at twelve thirty. The save the dates. This, this afternoon, the Saluda Baptist Association hosted Spring Fling, which had, oh, about three hundred and thirty of our beautiful silver hairs in attendance, and we had of our Anderson County Senior Citizens Program about five of our different activities represented. Fourteen of them were driven by me in our Special Olympics bus to get there, and I told Mr. Allen the story, and I'll tell it real quick. Our leader, Alma Crawford, had us all dress in black for the simple reason to show off these brilliant green matching scarves. So, in the front row of Mills Creek Baptist Church in front of all the rest of the seniors, you see our Tolly Arts and Crafts not only make an impression, but stop the presenter in his tracks to ask, "Who is this group wearing these bright green scarves and matching?" We are making an impact. That impact is continuing to be felt, and the save the date cards were handed out from peer to peer this morning for our event. So, July twentieth, it will be our twentieth annual Joe Brown Senior of the Year. The JBC Advisory Council in January met to go ahead and select that Senior of the Year. It stays very hush-hush so that it will be a huge surprise for that recipient. You'll see that we've already talked to many of our dignitaries in town. They have reserved the date. Richard Shirley will be our emcee for the event. We are actually on May sixth having a first meeting of its kind, and that will be the Anderson County Outreach Entertainers and the senior folies to go coming together to mesh, to create the entertainment for this event. We are soliciting sponsorship from the senior industry. You see that the goal was set very lofty for this first year at forty thousand. It's a split sponsorship. Half of it goes to market our event with a desire to have billboards go up. On the inside of your pocket, you'll see what the billboard design looks like. It would simply say Friends of Senior Citizens Presents for two weeks, and then boom, you see the sunflower blooming and the Golden Years Jamboree promoting our July twentieth event at the Civic Center. The sponsorship levels among the senior citizen industry, as I have been out selling this idea and this concept, we're already at five thousand without working very hard. What that five thousand will look like, half of it comes to the event to market, the other half goes to those senior sunflower bankers. So, at our event, you've got your seniors behind their creation. You've got a sponsor with a check already written out to our Cancer Association of Anderson. They actually buy the cake of their choice with our soil sponsors, our twenty-five hundred dollar sponsor level going first to get the cream of the crop dessert, and then their senior takes the check and presents it to the Cancer Association of Anderson. So, my present, presentation today, one is awareness. Being Anderson County, I constantly am saying, "I'm the only forty-six-year-old wannabe senior citizen in Anderson County, and y'all are going to wear me out before I even reach my golden years." I'm also saying how we are such a wonderful reflection of our county investment. When we as taxpayers look at the positives that we are doing, I love that we can look no farther than our historical McCants School, see Special Olympics and Special Population Recreation, see our Joe Brown Senior Center, and know that we really are building momentum as well as buy-in to prepare us as a county for our Silver Tsunami. It's our Golden Years Jamboree.
Mr. Dunne, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Crowder.
How are you today?
I'm good, thank you.
I have several ladies in our church that come to your events, and they are always asking me, would I provide, or us provide, more additional parking? Is parking needed at other times other than when they have the Bridge Club event?
Well, Mr. Crowder, we really are full, and, and that's one of the things about promoting us as a program. Once I get us out there, we do run into, like, Tolly Arts and Crafts full. If we get one more coming in, we run into some issues. Bridge, we, we have as many as fourteen tables playing bridge, and when you bring fourteen tables into the backside of the historical McCants, we have a wonderful parking lot, but it gets filled up.
Last question is, if money were made available to provide additional space, according to Mr. Hopkins, who I've researched with him, trees would have to be cut down. Is that going to be a no-no?
At the trees, were first cut down, ended up becoming mulch in the yard, so we'll just reduce, recycle, reuse.
You just...
We'll recycle them. We'll still use them. They just won't be trees in the yard. They'll be mulch in the garden.
So, if funds were available, you would, you would welcome some additional parking spaces?
We'll never turn anything away.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other Golden Years Jamboree questions?
Mr. Chairman?
If I could, yeah. Not so much a question, Kelly Jo, I just want to thank you for what you do. I know I've been to several of your events over there, and, and I think you do a wonderful job, and, and I certainly want to thank you for that. And I like that term you've got Silver Tsunami. Now, as soon as you open up a group over there called the Bald and Bodacious, then I'll have someplace to hang out, okay?
You're my leader.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Kelly Jo.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Wilson?
Thank you, Ms. Kelly Jo. You do such an amazing job, and the older folks in my district have greatly benefited by your bright and cheerful programs, and I've dropped by to see, and all the smiling faces. It really does us proud. Say thank you very much, and I'm with Mr. Allen. That Silver Tsunami wave is maybe one we'd prefer not to catch yet.
Harmon, we do appreciate what all you do and your group out there. They do tremendous things. We've been to several of them. We do appreciate it. Yes, Mr. Barnes?
Just a, a social note. Ms. Barnwell celebrated her twenty-fifth wedding anniversary last night. It skins from South Carolina.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr..
Moving on to item number seven, presentation representing the CDB and other concerns. Ms. Floyd?
You ready? Mr. Ternick, my time starts now. Okay, citizens and taxpayers of Anderson County, I am here before you tonight to talk with you about the last county meeting that was held here. I thought it would be safer for me to be here talking to you about it than to be up there. I will be showing the tapes of that meeting to verify exactly what happened. It all started when this ordinance appeared on the screen. Now, I had never seen this before. I had a talk with Mr. Burns that day where I asked him about the, the Anderson, whatever they call the thing, visitors board, okay. I, I had a visit Anderson somewhere in the economics building. I was not able to meet the meeting last week because I had a chance to get out of town where I have not had a chance in almost since Thanksgiving, so I took the opportunity to go out there. But I met with Mr. Burn, and he told me what had happened because I did get two telephone calls from people who attended the meeting to ask me, "What is going on?" So, that piqued my interest, and I talked with him in his office, and he told me, "Oh, it wasn't much. I wasn't even in there. I couldn't go in, and so I don't know what happened, so I can't tell you much." He said, "It was not in the meeting because it was a executive session." Okay, so, when I came here that night, this was put up on the board for us to vote on. Now, I don't know about you, but I don't even know what that means. So, I began to ask questions because I found it vague, and I didn't know what the point was. So, that's how it started. Now, if you have a copy of the minutes from last week, I did pass out some. If you want a copy for the minutes of last week, raise your hand, and I'll see, see to it that you can get one. Okay, would you do that for me, Jane? Copy the last speech to the people who have their hands up. Okay, all right. Now, for your information, I didn't write the minutes. The minutes were being recorded as I speak now, and the people up there recorded it, and they, and somebody else on my dono will take it and write it down. and they, and somebody else on my dono will take it and write it down. Okay. All right, I started asking questions about the Innovate Anderson and what was this about? And I was told that, I said it wasn't clear, and I said, there's gotta be more to it than this than what I was being told. Mr. Dunn, on page seventeen, line twenty-four, said, you can read what he says, but he said it had been a year-long process. I didn't know anything about that, the year-long process. And he said, well, let me read to you what he said. He said, well, to start off with, as I said, this was, this has been a year-long process and discussion. The ones that's been going to Innovate Anderson meetings, and I will admit that I wasn't one that could get up at eight o'clock in the morning to attend those meetings. I did when it first started, but I didn't seem to have a purpose there. And I just stopped going. But I found out since then, all of them were not going either. Okay, he said, and they appointed a committee, and the committee's recommendation was for them to come out from under them. And the bottom line, my thing is, the county is the one that's got the majority of the money in. We should have more say and control of our thing. Neil Paul has done an outstanding job with the lake and the tuna missing thing. But my feeling is it needs to be appointed by our folks and be around there. And Innovate Anderson folks felt like, the ones that have been going to the boards felt like this too. I don't know if that was clear to you, what he said, but it wasn't clear to me. And he said, remember this thing, only reason it was like state law says. But anyway, he just went on and on. So it got into a scene where every time I asked for questions, he was getting really tired, short answers. So I said to him, well, I said, Mr. Burns, Mr. Dunn, I didn't come up here to fight. I came up here to ask questions about this. But then he jumped me saying, you can ask anybody you want, and da-da-da. And the question got louder and louder, so I said, listen, we'll pull aside, and I'll table it, and we'll come back to it. Well, by that time, it was on. He was mad. And it went on to the, I was quiet during the meeting, and it went on to the allocations. Now, folks, let me tell you this. I paid, excuse me, District Two paid five thousand dollars for the kids at Broadway, the kids at Homer Park to have a baseball team down there because those kids need something to do. I had nineteen kids from District Two to sign up. Mr. Dunn had thirty five. This was being done by the Recreation Center, City Recreation Center. I asked the director there if he would call Mr. Dunn and see if he was gonna pay for his own children out of District Five. Somehow, I saw where Mr. Crowder was going to allocate money for District Five and District Two. I didn't need any money. I paid five thousand dollars. So if you were looking on page twenty-seven, line thirty-five, go up to line fourteen, it says, "Any discussion by Mr. Dunn?" I said, yes. I had the floor. You got it? Okay. I had the floor. Hold on a minute. And I said, Mr. Crowder, did I see on your recreation allocation form that you were doing this for District Two and District Five? He said, I don't know. He said, I don't know about two and five. Well, just give me a minute. I found the form, and the form said, for Mr. Crowder, it said, "Baseball equipment for District Two and Five children." That's what it says. I want to thank you for that, I said. I thanked Mr. Crowder for that. I said, I want to thank you for that. But District Two has already paid five thousand dollars. We don't need any more money, okay? And I said again, and I thank you anyway. Francis Crowder said, well, I'd like to remind the distinguished councilmember that part of the city of Anderson is in District One. And I said, I'd like to give you the information that this is not, and I was cut off. This is when the chairman said, let's not make a big deal. The guy wants to give four hundred dollars to that city of Anderson to help the rec department. He can't do that. He couldn't give the city of Anderson money to help the rec department. The money for District One, Homer Park had already been paid. And I tried to tell him that, but I was unable to do so because Mr. Dunn interrupted me. I had the floor. He took the floor from me, yelling and screaming. And I was trying to tell him, this money goes to Homer Park. We don't need any more money. I kept trying to say, we don't need any more money. Folks, what was I gonna do with the money? I already paid. I had no balance. I can't keep the money. I can't put it in my account. But I was just trying to tell the distinguished councilmember from District One that it's his money, and we don't need it. Okay, you wanna show that, please?
...the city of Anderson Recreation Board, for one dollar?
Okay, here it is. It says, "Baseball equipment for District Two and Five children." That's what it says, okay. I want to thank you for that, but please, District Two has been taken care of. District Two paid five thousand dollars for the children of District One, which is the name of the company, to play baseball at the stadium. So I wanted to make it work, that was due to the money for my children and my family, anyway.
Well, I'd like to remind the distinguished councilmember that part of the city of Anderson is in District One.
And I'd like to give you the information that this is not, okay. I would like to give you the information that this is not for the children of District One. These are city kids. This was only for the children of Homer Park because they are not in the city. They are not in the city. That was only for those kids. So if he wanted to give some money to the city kids in District One, that would have been perfectly all right. But I never got that far, please?
Let's not make a big deal. The guy wants to give four hundred dollars to the city man for helping the rec department.
As I was saying, this is not for city children. This is for Homer Park children.
Well, Mr. Crowder's doing it for his family, for his children.
This is, his children go, his children with care go to the Anderson County Recreation Center. My kids can't do that.
Well, I guess, if you read the application form, it said it was one, and even I'm each other has one. But apparently, Mr. Bevel made a mistake, or I'm not sure what it said.
Stuck at that, please.
Baseball equipment for District One.
Didn't know what I was thinking, lady, Miss Floyd.
All right, Mr. Bevel did not make a mistake. He called Mr., what's that? There, he called Mr. Burns, and he asked Mr. Burns, how can I get in touch with Mr. Dunn so I can ask him about the children? Mr. Burns said, I'll take care of everything. And that was the last he heard of it. Okay, please.
You just give, give money, the past my rec, I'm a theorist, I don't know, you don't, Miss Floyd, I've got the paper right now, Miss Floyd, please.
Thank you, Mr. Bevel, thank you. Please remember that I had the floor. Please remember that he asked any questions, and I said yes, and I had the floor at the time we were talking. Okay, go ahead.
I'm calling for a question, I'm...
And he never got a second for the question.
I'm calling for a question, so hang on. All the time?
Mama said he did call.
Third motion, carry, talk for a question, Mr. Waters, Brown, Dunn, Cole, Crowder, Wilson, Miss Floyd, you're closing.
Um, no, I'm, I'm, I've got one, say, last week... Um, no, I've got, like, last week...
Tell us, Floyd, the question's been called, we'll do it now.
Okay. I'm not... Last week, he had to pay $1,500 for the park, to get the park straightened out. I asked him sitting up there, I said, Mr. Burns, Mr. Dunn, excuse me, do you want me to help you pay that since we're both gonna use the park? He said, no, I can take care of it. He did the same identical thing that was being done. He told me, no. But it's okay for him to do it, but as a sitting councilmember with the same powers, with the same concerns, that's perceived power, but of the same concerns, I can't say anything. Okay, go ahead.
That's more, that's more for them, what's on?
No, and you told me, we don't have none. That depends on how that...
Now, we're gonna be talking all in favor of Mr. Crowder, much in favor? Our phone, our pages?
Oh.
Our question, carry, Mr. Waters, the Brown, Dunn, Cole, Mr. Crowder, Wilson, in favor of Ms. Floyd, hers. He's saying it's the crowd. I can't stop him.
Okay.
That's what this guy thinks.
Hold on a minute, okay. Notice, I have, uh, Mr. Chairman. Please notice, please notice, that none of my counterparts up there said a word, would look up, or didn't say a thing to this man who supposedly our chairman, who was having a temper tantrum, and who was clearly bullying me. No one said a word. So are they guilty by association? Also, some other things were said. It all goes back to them, to the meeting that I did not attend. But even though I did not attend the meeting, I should have had information of what was going on. Mr. Crowder said that everybody was there except me. That was not the truth. Mr. Cole wasn't there. There was, I wasn't there, Cole wasn't there. Mrs. Wilson said that she has been, she said she has had an ethics violation. She was cussed at, she was sued, and had violations complaint. That's not the truth. There were three lawsuits, including Ms. Wilson. She sued the county twice. She sued the county twice, lost both time and one with compound. Never had an ethics violation against her. So that's not the truth. But folks, why I'm doing, the reason why I'm doing this is that I'm tired. I'm tired to always have to fight all of these people. Why? Because I ask questions. How can you serve people when they don't see you serve them? When Kenny Floyd, my little boy, was two years old, we used to do family voting on certain things. And you got his vote every time. All you had to say was, whoa, and he'd throw his hands up. They vote for everything. Watch it. If you think I'm wrong, watch it. Read about it. They ask no questions. How can somebody serve you if you don't know what they're saying? You don't know how they're feeling about the issue. So they ask questions so you can learn the issue. But how can you do that? They say, well, we get our homework done before the meeting, of course. Well, I don't do it. I do my homework, but I sit down and write questions. Because if I don't know the answer, that means that you don't know the answer. That's my people in District Two. You don't know the answer. You don't know the questions. But if y'all are satisfied sitting here watching and raising their hands, fine with me. Mr. Chairman said that anybody want, wanna know anything, they can call and ask him. But they can't call and ask me. They can't call and ask me because I don't know anything. They don't tell me anything. But I will not be bullied. I will not be bullied. I'm not gonna be one of the people in the street that won't say nothing or do nothing because I'm afraid that somebody will say something to me. Bring it out. I will not refuse to be bullied. I refuse to be told to be quiet. That man has no heart. He's just the chairman. And the chairman only makes sure that the meetings are going well. He has no heart. Now, I don't know about the hanging out and stuff, but I don't know about that, but he has no heart. Not over me, not over District Two. I got my things and I left last meeting. Because I know if I hadn't left, I know it was the best thing for me to leave, I mean, to leave. Also, this man has been the chairman five times, or two times, or 10 times. This is what happens when you don't change, when you don't change personnel. People get too big from stuff, like your grandma tells you, you can be, you're rich. That's how they get. They become almighty. And they become so powerful, nobody can say anything to him. I've heard about other issues that bullying was going on. But, Gracie Floyd, you can get rid of him. That's what you wanna do, this man? This is not a career opportunity for me. I've had several careers in my lifetime, and there's another waiting for it to come. But if you're not satisfied with it, move me out. That's all you got to do. But the people in my district, my mouth is so dry. The people in my district are gonna sit there and let this man bully a person who has been on council for 16 years and have worked hard to give them what they wanted, to give them what they need. They work hard. I worked hard for that. And go sit there and not say anything? They call me a bad man again on the radio. When that music come on, y'all notice something? She's a bad man, but damn. Okay, and you wanna know something? They're right. They're right. Mr. Burns, it was mentioned that, it was mentioned that, that you were on the hot seat. That you were on the hot seat one time. I didn't know you were. But if you were, there was a reason. Leon, is my 30 minutes up yet?
Twenty-one minutes and 47.
Good, because now I would like to return to my seat because I have some more questions when it comes up on the CBB program. Because, Fred, please come here. Because I'm gonna ask you a question. Fred Baker, meet Freddie Baker. Uh, that's fine. Freddie Baker was one of my, he didn't even get one now. All right, thank you for listening to me, and I have some more stuff to say, and then I'll go home.
Mr. Chairman, may I move to the way of a break?
You didn't let her finish her for time.
Oh, I don't want to. I'll try to.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would release the doctor asking in my presentation. Come on to the seat. I want to thank you, say thank you.